Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 2016 televised Wallingford Board of Education Meeting. And I'd like to start by asking everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, this is where I miss Mr. Bado with his booming voice. Okay, Mrs. Lavoy, could I get a roll call, please? Here.
My photo's not here.
You might want to put your micro- yeah, put your microphone on.
Jay Shay here. Kathy Costelli.
Here.
Michael Bruder.
Here.
Karen Levesque.
Here.
Shawna Glidden.
Here.
Amanda Dorr and Patrick Reynolds.
So I just want to take a second and welcome Linda Lavoy with us. She's our new Board of Ed Administrative Assistant, and welcome, and it's a great pleasure to have you here, Linda. Okay, obviously, we don't have student board representation in the summer. We have no awards. What are you giggling about, Dr. Menzo? You're late to the meeting, and now you're giggling. You are going to get a detention tonight. We have no presentation of awards from this vast audience. Is there anybody with a question for the Board of Ed? Okay, no questions. So with that, if I could get a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of matter related to WE negotiations, discussion of acceptance of resignations, discussion of candidates for teacher teaching positions, discussion of department heads, and discussion of tentative agreement with UPS EU management.
So moved.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're in executive session. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Item seven is our consent agenda items. Can I get a motion to accept consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.5?
So moved.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, we have no items removed from the consent agenda. Item number nine, correspondence. Ms. Levesque?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just to acknowledge what we passed on the consent agenda, we are very thankful that we have received six tools for the middle school capstone rooms from Safco Products Company in the amount of $1,500. We also received from Masonic Health Center's assistance and support of the Wallingford Adult Education CNA program. That's from Masonic Care Health in the amount of $25,000. And we also have received from Gaylord Hospital's assistance and support of the Wallingford Adult Education CNA program. That's from the Gaylord Hospital, in the amount of $37,000. We are very, very fortunate to have the support of our community in these endeavors.
Thank you very much.
Also, we have a letter of thanks from the family of Edward T. Stave for the floral arrangement that was sent to the family from the board.
Thank you. Item 10, our committee reports. ACES?
No, there was no meeting this.
I would imagine we'll go through these pretty quickly, being summertime. Wintergreen Magnet School Steering Committee, no meeting. School to Career Business Think Tank, no meeting. Love this. PTAC, no meeting. Lyman Hall Athletic Comp- oh, did you have a PTAC?
No, I was going to say about the Lyman Hall Athletic Comp.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Deptula, I asked him not to come tonight because they've been working very hard all day, and it's been very, very hot, so I said, go home, relax. He's going to have a written update for the board in my Friday packet to go home, but right now, they're looking to paint the track. It was supposed to be happening this week, so as it stands right now, everything is moving forward on time.
Perfect. Good to hear. Plan of Conservation Development, I do not believe they've had a meeting. They're still trying to round up the troops on that. Food Services, which by the way, actually, just for public information, Pat Reynolds is our representative for the Plan of Conservation Development. Sorry about that. Food Service Strategic Plan Committee, I-
We didn't have an update, but we did have a meeting last week. We actually, the past two weeks, we've had meetings with Health Department and the Food Services staff, as well as a couple of parents, and the State Department, because we are going to be participating in a food recovery program, and also a share table at Moran Middle School next year. One of our middle school capstone students was concerned about waste at the middle school and why we can't donate it back to the community. So we had investigated a variety of different options, and one of our parents then took it to the next level, so we are going to be piloting it at Moran as part of a state pilot. It is approved by the USDA, so we're making some headlines there, so to speak, because we're moving forward with this. So what'll allow us to do is unserved items in the preparing area of the cafeteria will be able to, on a regular basis, be delivered to Master's Manor, where they'll pick it up. And then food that goes through the line, we talk about the menu where the students have to take certain components of the meal. There's the fruit, or there's the milk. That'll be put on a sharing table where students can, as long as it's not been opened, students can come up and say, hey, you know, I want another container of milk. They could take it. We can't charge for it, but they can take it, and that could be used. And then anything that's not used at the end of the day could also be donated to Master's Manor. So I'm meeting, actually, with the student tomorrow afternoon to start working on a plan for him to enact getting his fellow middle schoolers involved come the fall at Moran. So we'll have a presentation to the board most likely either September or October. The Health Department has been extremely helpful, as well as our interim Food Services Director, Alan Belcheck, and parents that have been involved, Mr. Jonathan Chapel, and also Ms. Tammy Ratchell.
You know, I just want to say thank you for that. That's a pet peeve of mine. I know we've discussed it as a board several times, and it just seems like such a waste when you know there are families out there that are struggling, that if we can just give a little bit of assistance, and the thought of throwing food away, perfectly good food away, is just unconscionable. So I applaud those efforts.
And I'm really looking forward to having the student come and present.
That would be awesome. I'll thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Good job. Okay, we have no old business. Item 12, Instructional Committee.
Thanks, Roxanne. Item 12.1, Approval of Acceptance of Resignations. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Elaine Sunt effective June 30, 2016. Elaine Sunt has been a math curriculum resource teacher since December 2014.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Melissa Boyce effective June 30, 2016. Melissa has been a reading interventionist and a grade-two teacher since August 2012.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed. Motion carries. Item 12.2, Approval of Appointment of Candidates to Teaching Positions. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following candidates to teaching positions for the 2016-17 school year contingent upon proper Connecticut certification, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Pupil personnel department, special education teacher at Lyman Hall High School, Krista Esposito, at Cook Hill School, grade one, Alyssa Andrucci, grade two, Cara Feliga, grade two, I'll say, Brittany Susi, and, oops, sorry about that, and Highland School, kindergarten Jenna Chick, and also in kindergarten, Elana Rashba. At Moses Y. Beach Elementary School, grade two, Jenna Quagliolaro, I'm sorry, Quaglior-
Quagliaroli.
I know how to spell.
She's just sorry if she's doing a job.
See, I'm used to these one-syllable Italian names. Sorry about Quagliaroli.
I know.
Grade two. Parker Farms Elementary School, grade four, Kimbly Romano. Rock Hill Elementary School, grade four, Daniel Growski. Dag Cameron Show Middle School, English, grade seven, Lacy Corider, and English, grade eight, Nicholas Salano. Moran Middle School, English, grade eight, Nicole Maciano, and English, grade seven, Stephanie Clark. At Lyman Hall, in the agricultural education food science, Nicole Decker Lawler, and in English, Brittany Olivira.
Olivira.
Olivira, thank you.
No problem.
Mark Sheehan High School, school counselor, department head, Lana Pacoski. Curriculum math coach, K5, Christina Torrey, and health and wellness resource teacher, Anthony Loomis.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, and that motion carries. And Jenna Quagliolarli, Quagliaroli, is here with us tonight. Congratulations, Jenna.
Congratulations, Jenna.
To her mom.
She's a good homegrown girl, right in Wallingford. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Item 12.3, Approval of Appointment of Department Heads. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the named individual on the list as department head and team leader for appointment to their listed position at Mark T. Sheehan High School for the 2016-17 school year, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, and contingent upon State of Connecticut Department chairperson certification. I further move that the above referenced list be included as a part of the minutes in this Board of Education meeting. Math, Jason Buffard.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. And last, I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the named individual on the list as department head and team leader for appointment to their listed position at the Lyman Hall High School for the 2016-17 school year, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, and contingent upon State of Connecticut Department chairperson certification. I further move that the above referenced list be included as a part of the minutes in this Board of Education meeting. English, James Genova.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Great, thanks, Jay. Oh, actually, you have one more item.
Oh, wait, we got one more.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
One more item. 12.4 is discussion and possible approval of innovation and leadership exploration and development opportunities. Dr. Menzo?
I've put in front of your places a proposal that was put together by administrators at central office at building level, and also one of our teachers. We have a variety of proposals in front of you, but basically, the problem that we're trying to address are the opportunities that we're trying to afford, our additional professional development opportunities and professional experiences for not only our teachers, but also for our paraeducators and our administrators in our district. So what you'll see before you is that we have a problem statement, looking at the ever-changing profession. We know that we have, in many aspects of our system, we have millennials in our system who certainly are going to seek a variety of opportunities to grow throughout their career. And education traditionally in the United States doesn't offer a varying opportunity for that growth. Yes, you're in a classroom, and you grow every year as a teacher, because our teachers are challenged to do so, but outside of that, oftentimes, there aren't those deep opportunities to do research or investigate. And we do have the innovation team, which we're fortunate to have, but we want to try to offer this opportunity for more staff members. In addition, we know that this year, throughout our hiring process, we were very fortunate that we were able to promote people within our school system that had been teachers in our system, very successful teachers, successful leaders in their own right now to leadership roles in schools in our district, and we want to see that continue to happen. And we are very impressed with all of our internal candidates this year, so we'd like to expand upon that at this time. So the first proposal, which I have to give recognition where recognition is due, this came from Leslie Paselli Cuputa, who was one of our capstone teachers at Moran Middle School last year, and also Julie Foss came to us with the proposal of doing the Ignite Program, which is an innovation opportunity, basically working off of the Google 60-40 model, where teachers who teach five classes at a school would opt to teach six classes at one point during the school year while their colleague taught four, and then they would switch. So it might be at the trimester, at the high school level, it might be at the semester level. This really doesn't work at the elementary level, and it doesn't necessarily work with specialists. That's why we have additional proposals to try to accommodate all of our staff in these innovative ideas. So this would be a reduction in work while another staff member picked up that class for a period of time, and during that time, that they would have that free time, it would be utilized to do some independent research. They'd work with their building administrator to help facilitate what the research might be, but it would really trying to have people deeply explore new interests and work to implement practices. So that's the Ignite Program that we're recommending as part of a multi-pronged leadership approach. The second piece is we believe that we need to cultivate all levels of our organization, and paraeducators that come into our system oftentimes take on those roles because they are looking to discern whether or not they want to go into the teaching profession. So what we'd like to offer is for our paraeducators that would be selected in the program, and this would be an application process for all of these pieces. So not everybody who applies will get accepted, but we wanted to offer for our paraeducators that get selected to be part of this, five release days, during which they can go shadow a classroom teacher at the grade level that they might want to explore teacher certification, so we can grow kind of that farm system, where people who might not necessarily have had the means or have had the time to go back to school to become a teacher, they might have had an undergraduate degree in a different area, but are a paraeducator at this time and now have a love for teaching and want to get into that area. So what we would do is, again, they would apply, they would have to identify their specific teaching interests, explore and identifies the skills necessary for teaching, and then identifies a growth plan. They would visit and explore their teaching area and maintain a reflective journal of their experiences, and upon completion, they would have opportunities to meet with central office staff to talk about next steps, as well as the teachers that they might have visited, and building administrators and community members. So the proposals for these would go to Administrative Council. The Administrative Council, which is our staff at the building levels, they would discuss the proposals, and then we would grant people the opportunity to participate. So that was for the paraeducators. The next layer, again, is another piece for the teachers. This proposal would be, again, for teachers to submit the proposal to myself as superintendent. They would identify an area of leadership, be it at the central office level in curriculum, or be it at the building level as an administrator. Explore and identifies, again, the skills necessary to be successful in that position. Do a self-analysis of where his or her skills lie at the present time, and then based on that gap, meet with the person that they would be working with, be it the administrator at the building level, to come up with a leadership plan to help them grow in those areas that are seen as gaps in their understanding for to be a qualified candidate for a leadership position. We'd like to offer the teachers 10 release days and then $1,000 stipend. We would be capping this at no more than 10 people a year, because we do believe that we want to be financially, you know, sound in that approach, so we believe that that would be a cap that we can maintain. And the idea that those 10 release days and the stipend, which would be for work beyond the school day, would help them increase their capacity, allow them to do research and implement their leadership project, and maintain a reflective journal. And again, upon completion, they would share their summary of their reflective journal and their experiences, and they would have an opportunity to meet with central office staff to chart a course of action for the future. So these programs, the people, the teachers that would be selected for this, most likely we'd highlight at a board meeting to share their leadership projects, so that we know what work has been accomplished. Again, these are all voluntary opportunities.
Could we just go back to the initial, the Ignite proposal?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that, has this been vetted through the union and their-
We did share it with the union. Actually, as of this afternoon, I even shared it with the person from the CEA. The union president hasn't responded to the document, but it's been shared with all the union presidents that were impacted by this, so teachers, administrators, and also paraeducators. Again, because they're all voluntary in nature, and because of the fact that they're, again, having to go through a process to get into these programs, they're going to have to self-identify. I did not receive any level of concern from the CEA rep this afternoon, but again, that doesn't mean that there's something that may come up as we move forward. But again, they're all voluntary in nature, so we certainly would hope that the union would want to support, and I believe our union does want to support and does successfully support, as evidenced by their collaboration with the 21st Century Innovation Team, the growth of their colleagues. So we would work together if there's any questions and iron those out in a proactive manner for our teachers.
Okay, thanks.
So that's the leadership development for the teachers. And then last, a group that oftentimes gets left out, but in good succession planning, succession planning, we should look at our administrators at the building level to see if there's interest at central office, be it in superintendency, assistant superintendency, business manager, whatever it may be. Not that any of us are going anywhere, but the fact is that we want to offer administrators the opportunity to explore. So we're looking at giving administrators five release days, where they would be able to shadow, work on developing their plan, doing some research. And again, they would have to identify an area of focus. It might be an area of, as I said, personnel, special education, whatever it may be, curriculum, and we'd want to work with them to have a clearly defined plan. None of these would be arbitrary. There would be a clear plan, and as the application would be developed, which it is already developed, would look like, again, similar to the other levels, where they would have to do a gap analysis of where their present strengths lie versus the areas that they would need to have strengths in in order to be successful in a position that they're potentially investigating.
You want to go? Well, go ahead.
Other than the potential $10,000 a year with the teacher stipend, assuming 10 people went, is there any other unintended or unforeseen or potential costs for any of these programs?
Well, there would be the substitute costs. So for the teachers, if you look at the 10 days, and you had the teachers out each of the 10 days, you're looking at approximately $800 a teacher for those 10 days, $80 a day. So again, if we had the full cadre, that would be another $8,000. So the total cost would be $18,000 for the teacher component. For the administrators, there is no coverage, so there wouldn't be a cost there, and the paraeducators would be a nominal expense. And actually, the administrators, in talking to some of them, they would do this over, you know, their vacation times, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a question in terms of, and this would be a great problem to have, a maximum number of people for each of these programs that you would entertain in a given calendar year?
Yes. I think that the easiest ones to quantify are the paraeducator and the teacher and the administrator program. The Ignite Program is going to really be a matter of getting those peers.
Right.
So, you know, that one is going to be a little bit more difficult to quantify because of the fact that we would not obstruct people, or we wouldn't be able to cap that one, or we wouldn't want to cap that one.
Right.
That one's an easy one. The other groups, the paraeducators, we're looking at no more than 10.
Okay.
The teachers, no more than 10, and the administrators, we're looking, most likely, and we haven't come up with a hard number, no more than two to three.
I just think it's a great opportunity for professional development on a different level for our staff, and I think it's a great idea. Thanks.
Again, our goal is really to try to make certain that our professionals at all levels know how much we appreciate them, how much we value them, and that we know that their growth is really crucial in making certain that our district moves forward, and that, again, it's not for everyone every year. It's not for everyone, maybe, at all, but the fact is, we don't want to avoid or stop ourselves from offering these opportunities for those that might really want to take an opportunity like this and run with it.
I just, I agree with that. I think it's a great idea, and I applaud your initiative to it. When you think of people that can be in the same position for up to 35 years, they really need periods of time, I think, to reinvigorate themselves, explore different things, and this is a great opportunity for them to, as you put it here, address problems of practice or explore a personal, professional interest. I think it's a great career move.
Again, I want to reiterate that I can't thank Leslie and Julie enough for their hard work on moving this forward also, and Cindy and Sean have been key in reviewing it and making certain that it had its rigor to it, as well as was still going to be attractive because people are working full-time jobs, so. And we also want to make sure that students were not going to be compromised to an extent-
Right.
-where we've heard other programs have, we're not looking to hire long-term subs, those types of things, which oftentimes can become a challenge.
So, Dr. Menzo, you're looking for an approval of this this evening? Is that, I mean, that's the way it's spread on-
I put it on there because I figured if we could, that'd be great, because then we could work more closely in the application process and be able to launch that appropriately during the course of August. If there's a desire to just talk about it more, that's fine. We could wait till August. It's up to all of you.
You guys are good? Board members are good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to make, can I get a motion for the approval of the innovation and leadership exploration and development opportunities, as outlined in this document?
Second.
I have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
No worries. Item 13 is operations. We didn't have an operations meeting, so I don't know if you have any person-
Well, I would just like to say that we did welcome, as an interim, Ed Arum-
Yep.
-who will be our interim business manager while we're out searching. The job was posted last week.
Perfect.
It looks to close on August 12th. Our goal is to interview the week of August 22nd, first round, do some constituent interviews, and then hopefully appoint within the month of September for a hopeful start date sometime October, end of October, the latest. Ed comes to us with a wealth of experience. He is truly a gentleman, phenomenal to work with already, just has blended in with the group, and is very visible, meeting with everyone throughout the district, getting a feel for what's going on. And I feel like we've been given a gift in Ed, because he interviews school districts when he is asked to apply, and he definitely interviewed us just as much as we interviewed him. And I think that I feel grateful that we passed the test, so to speak, because I think we've definitely, we've definitely acquired a beginning relationship, which I think may have many phases to it, that I just really feel that we're fortunate. So Ed is working with the business staff right now. If you're trying to get to the business office, don't, because there's a lot of construction going on. So Ed is helping facilitate that, as well as all of our maintenance staff, and Karen as our IT person. So we're working in that area. They should be, hopefully, back in business, I think, next week. They are still working, but they're in different locations. They're kind of spread out because there's new carpeting going in their area, and there was a lot of renovations going on, so. But we're very pleased to have Ed, and he'll be at our August meeting.
Perfect.
He again asked if he needed to come tonight, and I said, ah, it's only your, like, third day on the job. I said, why don't you come in August, and you could give an update at that point.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item 14 is new business. I don't believe we have any. Item 15, Administration Report. You're on, Dr. Menzo.
Yes, so as I just mentioned, central office is under construction, and so while Ms. Veyou is going to set up a quick presentation, not about central office, so while she's doing that, but central office is under renovation. Our landlords are incredible. They have been so collaborative and so supportive of the renovations that are occurring there, and really on time with everything that they've committed to. So we're making amazing headway there, which is exciting, and so hopefully, we will be utilizing this space soon in terms of our new board conference room and such. At this- At this time, we wanted to highlight a video that's being shown at the movie theaters prior to movies, and we've heard that there's been some applause as well as some good laughs. But it's to celebrate and to encourage summer reading. And I want to thank Evan, who is actually taping tonight in the back room, who's one of our IT workers, and Karen for their hard work. Evan did an amazing job on this, pulling it together, and then Karen helped facilitate getting it to the movie theater. So we just wanted to give you a quick snippet to show you the commercial that's being shown before movies this summer.
Hi, I'm Dr. Menzo, Superintendent of the Wallingford Public School District. This summer, I will be spending a lot of time at the ballpark, not only watching games in person, but also enjoying the stories of two amazing greats.
Hi, I'm Anne Poirier. I am the Media Specialist at Moses Y. Beach Elementary School, and at Moses Y. Beach, we'll be reading Elephant and Piggy Books by Bo Willams.
Hi, I'm Joe Piasentini, Principal of James H. Moran Middle School. This summer, I'll be reading Lincoln on Leadership by Donald T. Phillips.
I'm a member of the Executive Leadership Program at UConn. One of the books I'll be reading is Instructional Rounds in Education: A Network Approach to Improving Teaching and Learning, which is fitting for my job. The book's written by Elizabeth City, Richard Elmore, Sarah Fireman, and Lee Tatell by the Harvard Educational List.
Hi, I'm Carrie Latour. I'm the Principal at Rock Hill School. This summer, I will be reading Space Case by Stuart Gibbs.
Hi, I'm Nick Ives. I'm the Sheehan Librarian here in Wallingford, Connecticut. And this summer, I'm reading Seven Eves. That's where I picked up this book. First line was, "The moon blew up without warning and for no apparent reason. It was waxing, only one day short of full." I gotta know what happens next, and Neil Stevenson's gonna bring me on a great ride.
Hi, I'm Christine Friend. I'm the Principal of Cook Hills School in Wallingford, and this summer, I will be traveling to Maine to read Blueberries for Sal, a special book that I had as a child to my granddaughter.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Duffy. I'm the Principal of Sheehan High School, and this summer, I'm going to be reading Hotel on the Corner of Bitter and Sweet by Jamie Ford.
Hi, my name's Joe Settar. I'm the Deputy Fire Chief of Operations for the Fire Department, and this summer, I'm reading A Passion for Excellence by Tom Peters and Nancy Austin.
Oh, hi. I'm Mrs. McCall. I'm the Library Media Specialist at Yountville Elementary School. This summer, I'll be reading The Boundless by Kenneth Hobel.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ms. Reed. I'm the Principal here at Highland School on a beautiful sunny day. I'm going to Maine this summer, and the book that I selected from our library is called The Train to Maine.
Good morning. I'm Bill Wright, the Police Chief in Wallingford, and this summer, I'm reading Presidential Courage by Michael Beschloss.
Hi, I'm Ms. Sunny, the Head of the Children's Services Department here at the Wallingford Public Library, and this summer, I am challenging myself to read every book that has been nominated for the Nutmeg Award, including this one, The Misadventures of the Family Fletcher. And I think you should read them too.
Wallingford Reads.
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 Wallingford Reads!
So this summer, why don't you join everyone here in Wallingford and read a good book?
So we want to thank Evan Lysir and Karen Veyou for their hard work. Again, we just wanted to encourage students to read throughout the summer, and we had such collaboration with all the town leaders and officials that we asked. So again, just wanted to highlight that for everyone. So again, thank you to Evan and Karen for their hard work on the...
And you know, the Wallingford Theater is so generous about letting us use them as a venue, and everybody likes to see themselves or, you know, that's my school system, you know, it's a nice segue.
We're very happy, and actually, it's been the topic of a few conversations we're having with a couple of new partners that we're hoping to be able to announce this fall on reading in particular. So they were very impressed, I sent them the link, and they were very impressed with the video, and that's gone a long way in our negotiations, so we're very happy with that.
Very nice.
Just to let you know, we had students who did travel to Germany successfully, and they're home, and they had a great trip. They're going to come to this August board meeting, no, excuse me, September board meeting, I believe, to...
Were those the middle schoolers? Because we just got, I just got a postcard from them, which was so sweet. We all got them. It was really, really sweet that they sent postcards.
They did a great job. Peter Fleischman and James and Drayson, where the staff chaperones did a fantastic job. They had an amazing trip, saw one of our students today, so it was a great opportunity. Next Wednesday, I'll be boarding a bus at 9:30, I think, with our 16 high school students and Christine, oh, excuse me, Olt, who is our teacher from Lyman Hall, will be traveling to China with our students again to go to Beijing and Shanghai. Today, we were at Hubcap, and the students were practicing their business presentations. They did a very nice job. You know, they're working on it, they've given themselves deadlines, and they've really come together as a great group. So we'll be gone from August 3rd through the 15th, and then they'll come to a board meeting also to share. We're in the final stages, just sticking on the international kick here, final stages of finishing up the plans for students to come from Sicily in October to do homestays, and the intent is that our students will be going to Sicily in April to visit the school, and that was a project that was set up by a Capstone student at Sheehan High School. So we're very proud of that. Central Office again has been very busy this summer. I'd like to compliment Ms. Lavellette for all the work that she's done in hiring with the many staff members, all of our administrators, Mr. Parkers being part of the interview committees as well as all of our building administrators, special education, Mr. Mancusi, everyone has been part of this process, but Ms. Lavellette really has been the force behind it, and we want to thank her for that hard work. I'd also like to thank Mr. Parkers for all the work that's going on in curriculum, helping facilitate that. There's a tremendous amount of scoring criteria being written, and also he's facilitating the development of a mastery-based learning toolkit that teachers will have in the fall, and then will be taking that and as part of our work as the district leadership team, the leadership team will be working to make a parent and student toolkit so that as we move closer towards our 2017 launch, we will be better prepared. So there is no quiet at Central Office. It is just the fact that we are always moving forward. This week, we do have some exciting things going on. We're inviting some, we have some guests coming to visit on Thursday to start an Innovation Council that you'll be hearing more about, that is actually for the northern sector, so to speak, of the United States, and we're the hub of that. And then also on Friday, we'll be going, there's about 10 of us going to Samsung in New York City. We're being hosted by Samsung to identify some technology that will be donated for our adult idealab that we are building at Central Office, totally based on donations. So as more comes available on that, we have some 3D renderings that I believe will be in place within the next couple of weeks. We'll send them out to board members, and of course, we'll have the benefit of having our meetings there, so you'll be able to see it firsthand, and it'll be a space for teachers as well as students, administrators, all our community. So we're excited, a lot of work going on, but it's all moving forward in a very logical and successful, knock on wood, manner.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Menzo. Item 16, Announcements. I really don't have any. Item 17, Date of Our Next Meeting is Monday, August 22nd, here at the Robert Perry C. Town Council Chamber is at 7:00 PM. We do not meet for operations or curriculum in the summer months, so we just have the one meeting. And unless anybody's got anything for the good of the order, this meeting's adjourned. Have a nice night. Thank you.